Now, people, because of the number of people we have here, I have to switch screens back and forth. So you have to bear with me on that, the wonders of technology. All right, so Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
I'm just going to check. Board members, have any of you seen anyone raise their hand for this public hearing?
I haven't.
Have you heard, seen anyone? Is unmute yourself, Gavin.
I haven't seen anyone raise their hand.
Thank you. Tom, have you seen anyone?
No.
Jim?
No, I haven't.
Okay, Dennis?
No.
Very good. All right. Mrs. Springer, were you waving? No, thank you. All right. Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
It seems the public hearing is yours. Do you want to just give us a nutshell, Reader's Digest, of what you're doing?
Okay. I'm proposing to divide...
Let's start with the address.
Okay. 422 Buzzell Road. I'm proposing to divide two acres from the 28 that I own, 27.9 acres. I'd like to take two acres off of it on my road frontage down on Buzzell Road. I have engineered a road, a private drive per the town's request. Even made a change that was requested up to 8% instead of 10% for the grade. Just waiting to hear if I can close this out and drive some pen.
Okay, that's it. Thank you. Thank you very much. Not hearing anything from any of Butters. I think we simply are going to close this and say thank you and ask you to stick around for the meeting and we'll go forward. Okay. Thank you very much. Yes, Tom?
Board members, may I speak to this project?
Yeah. We're gonna, it's gonna be, it's on our agenda. It's on our agenda. Would you like to speak again?
Whenever it's appropriate.
Okay, well, let's go. Right now, I'd like to call to order, close the public hearing at 6:37, and I'd like to call to order the planning board meeting. Tonight's, the alternate tonight would be Mr. Crowley.
No.
No? You two?
I think he was last week.
Jim, were you the alternate last week?
Yes, I was.
Okay, my mistake. Thanks for catching me on it. You will be the alternate tonight. Since we're talking about alternates, I would like to just say a word about our member who is retiring after 18 years. Yoli Gallagher has given so much to this board. I know we all appreciate her time, her energy, her efforts, her knowledge, and her willingness to share with all of us as we came on the board. Tom, I think you're the only one who's been on longer than she has. And so our thanks go out to Yoli. And we will miss you. But thank you, Yoli Gallagher. I'd like to have the approval of the minutes of June 25. Dennis?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of June 25, 2028.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Leslie?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Tom? Dennis?
Yes.
Chair votes in the affirmative. We're going to, we're gonna talk to Mr. Mahoney and then we're gonna be, go off track a little. All right. Mr. Mahoney, back up.
Yes.
Okay. Tom, you had questions?
I had a question for anyone who might have visited, or board members who might have visited the site of Jim after last Sunday's downfall. Leslie, did you happen to observe?
Actually, I did not go down there. We had enough trouble on our road. However, I did want to bring up, we did get a letter in the planning from Lakeside Drive. Probably should have gone on the public hearing.
Probably.
They, do you want me to read it?
Not at this time.
No? Okay. So no, I have not been down to see what kind of damage might have occurred from our Sunday monsoon.
Good way of putting it, a monsoon. Let me just say this before we go any further. Anybody who wants to address the board on any reason needs to send their correspondence either to me, the chair, or to the land office. Otherwise, your chances of getting it on the agenda are very, very slim. They're very slim.
Joyce, this came to, this went to the CEO.
It did. Okay.
It did, yes.
All right. Tom, then it's probably what was discussed last week.
Tim, a question for Tim Mahoney. Tim, did you notice any erosion in the area of the project after Sunday's downfall?
So there was some washout along my road frontage. But if anybody was to go down there and look at it right now, that erosion started on the parcel above my property. The next parcel up, which is owned by Mr. Charles, can't remember his name, but the property above mine is where the wash started. It's very minimal when it came by my property. But I didn't see any wash that came off my property onto Buzzell Road. It started on the land above mine.
Okay. It's unfortunate that we don't have any, a plan that could be glanced at to consider this proposal, but...
I'm sorry, Tom. What do you mean?
A map. A graphic of some sort. But we don't, we're not, we're not there yet.
We had, we, you should have a map in your packet.
Yeah, I couldn't find it today, but anyway. The reason for my question was I was wondering if there would be any legitimate reason to reconsider the short window of a 25-year storm that was being applied to this project in terms of its construction standards on site regarding stormwater. But I feel like we don't have the tools in the kit to raise that question. That's all. Thank you.
Yes.
Unless someone else, Dennis, maybe? Did you happen to glance at the project area after Sunday's storm?
No, I didn't.
You had your hand up.
Yes. I know that there is discrepancy as to who is supposed to be taking care of that section of Buzzell Road. And I did some checking in Lakeside Drive Road Association because the town has, it's not, does not take care of the road, either maintenance nor snow plowing. They actually take care of the road. They paid for plowing from the fork at Langley Shores down past Mr. Mahoney's property. Even though, like I said, even though supposedly the town is supposed to own it and take care of it, they don't. So I guess my question would be, if we approve this subdivision, would Mr. Mahoney be willing to put in the deed that the new owner would be part of Lakeside Drive Road Association and contribute to their dues, you know, contribute dues to help maintain that portion of the road?
I don't know how that would be, how that would happen. Dennis?
Leslie, I don't think that would be legal.
Okay.
You're talking two different roads.
Well, I know that, but I mean, it's...
If Buzzell Road was after Lakeside Drive, then you could have them pay dues. If they're using Lakeside Drive to get to their property on Buzzell Road. Lakeside Drive taking care of Buzzell Road, I don't even believe it's legal. It's an issue between Lakeside Drive and the town of Acton. And you can't require somebody on a different road to, almost positive, you cannot require somebody on a different road to belong to another road association. It doesn't affect their property at all. That's what I believe.
It is just an unfortunate circumstance that the town has, has not taken care of their part of the responsibility. And so Lakeside has actually, you know, done it because they need that road plowed and passable in order to get to their properties.
Well, I appreciate it.
They've just done what they needed to do.
But that's something between Lakeside Drive and the town of Acton.
Yeah, okay.
All right. That being said, are there any other questions? Gavin?
Yes, I wanted to ask Tim about the fire pond noted on the plan.
Yes.
Just a general rundown of why it was noted on the plan.
Noted on the plan?
That was never done, Gavin.
On the road?
I was looking at the plan earlier and there's a note on the side, said something about lot four has a fire pond that's supposed to be constructed by the town. I was just wondering how that came to be on the plan.
So that's on the whole plan of the subdivision. The town was supposed to upgrade up, probably a quarter mile uphill from my property where the, where the brook crosses the road. On the, on the plan, the town was supposed to upgrade and put in a fire pond. I'm not sure when, but I don't think the deed specifies a date, but they were supposed to upgrade that. And Kenny Paul actually noticed that a couple of months ago when I was in there with him going over my deed. And that's something that the town should have addressed probably years ago. But that's probably a quarter mile uphill from me.
Dennis?
I believe the history on that, Gavin, is, and it's too bad Chip isn't around anymore. But when that was approved by the planning board originally, you're 100% right, the town was supposed to construct a fire pond in there. And, but I don't think the information ever came from the planning board to the people that would have done it. For example, the road commissioners. And I think it was just left on the side and just never done.
So that, yes, Ken?
It's kind of odd that they would have had the town construct that on private property. And maybe they rethought that and figured out that they were wrong. But Mr. Mahoney's plan will have residential fire sprinklers in the one proposed house. So that'll cover fire protection as far as the town. And I think...
There's Ken Paul. Was it Ken Paul was late? Ken Paul.
Excuse me. If not part of Mr. Mahoney's project, mute your speakers, please. We cannot talk over one another. Ken, go ahead.
I think Leslie has the original letter from the Lakeside Drive Association. And I think Tim's talked to them and addressed them. Is that correct, Tim?
Yes, I have.
Yeah. And what was the outcome with your meeting with them?
I told them my exact proposal. Spoke with Joe as well as, who's the other, the head?
I think it was Tom.
Yes. I spoke with both of them actually in my driveway. They came in my driveway one day and we spoke. And I told them what I had proposed and they were totally all set with it, according to them. They had no issues with what I was doing.
I think by them not being here tonight, that I would agree with you on that.
Oh, good.
Speak loudly. I would like to entertain a motion to go forward with Mr. Mahoney's request. Can I have a motion, please?
Do you like?
Dennis?
Am I still there?
Yeah, you're there. Dennis?
I'll make a motion to approve the modification to the subdivision plan, creating one lot reference plan on Hickory Ridge at Lot 11. Reference to plan was 102919, I think it was.
2019?
2019.
I'll second that. Yes, Gavin?
I was wondering which stage of the subdivision plan we're in, sketch preliminary?
This is breaking off one lot. There's no more to it than that.
It's final, Gavin.
It's final, Gavin.
We went through a site walk and quite a few hoops to do, past even subdivision on Mills Road just a few months ago.
We did the same here. It was marked for us to go and see. You weren't at the meetings then.
You did a site walk? So this is the final plan?
Ken?
With the amendment to an existing subdivision, we start at preliminary. There's usually no sketch. And we started this back in October. So we got going a little bit, then we were shut down with the pandemic. So we're just trying to pick up from there. And it, as Joyce said, it's a one-lot expansion into the Hickory Ridge.
Dennis?
Joyce, do we need to make part of that motion, the waiver on the slope?
I believe he fixed that.
That's all set, Ken?
Ken? Did he not, he corrected that?
Correct. They went from the 10% down to the 8% in design. Tim, I've lost him off my screen. But Tim, do you plan on constructing the road or selling the lot and letting the buyer do the work?
It's still, it's still up in the air. I might keep it for a while. I may sell it. But I'm not planning on putting the road in at this point.
I believe it's a two-year window you have to get it in and get the completion of it.
Yeah, it is.
Two years, so you have to come back to us.
Yeah, I don't want that.
I was just reading that to you.
Those are the lemons. You do it two years, so you come back.
Were there any other waiver requests for this project?
Are there any other questions? I will call for a vote then. Leslie?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. Thank you all. Mr. Mahoney? Good luck. Two years. Ken?
Tim, if you just have your engineers draw up a couple of full-size plans with the signature blocks and a Mylar, bring them in and I'll have the board stop in and sign them.
Okay, that isn't what I asked in. The, oh, with the eight, the whole, the whole plan with the 8% on it and the signature block, is what you're saying?
Correct, yeah. 2436. And then the Mylar is a clear plastic and that's what you'll record at the registry.
Okay. If I knew, if I, they're gonna know what I'm talking about, correct?
Yep. Yeah, they'll know.
Gavin?
What were the contours on the plan?
With the contours on the plan? Correct.
Yes.
What was the spacing of the contour?
With the spacing of the contours, yes.
What was that spacing, Joyce?
Oh, what was it? Let me pull out my maps.
I think it went down to five feet.
Hang on. Can you see it? It goes down to five feet, but it doesn't really.
Six, six, four.
Two feet.
Two feet?
Yes, two feet. Thanks, Ken. I think it was five and I ended up, Ken, I mean, tell the guys to change it to two feet.
All right, that's what we have, two feet. And some is actually a little lower. Oh. So hard to do this when we can't all see this. Anything else? You're all set? Then we are all set. It's unanimous vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Enjoy the rest of your evening.
You too. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays to you. I just need a minute to, won't I do this? Before we go further in old business, I would like to say that, and I do hope that everyone who is here for Martel is listening. This past Monday, after our storm, I went to the subdivision with DEP enforcement on Monday. I was there from 2:00 in the afternoon till 5:00 in the afternoon. There was not one piece of property that walked. And...
Joyce, your audio didn't come in there. There was not one piece of property, what?
We didn't walk.
Okay.
We were there for three hours.
Thank you for your...
I was there with DEP. I specifically asked him about violations. And as of Monday, he found no violations. There was no sediment running anywhere. The, he found not one thing on Monday to complain about. The crossings were fine. We actually, I made a joke about it, that I would actually drink that water if I were on the TV show that I won't talk about much, the one that people don't wear the clothes and all that. And, but it was, and he said, well, I'll drink it today. So I do want you to know that we do take this very seriously and we go out there. And to go out there on that rainy day after the storm was quite enlightening. The one thing I want everyone, particularly my board, to know because of this and where we are, you know, we were closed down for three months. And because of recent happenings, I am telling every board member, and I'm using the word telling, not asking, to make an appointment with Ken. Bring in your packet of the Martel subdivision, Youngs Ridge Road. Bring it with you. Make an appointment with Ken. And make sure you have every piece of information that you need and should have. We've had people who have missed meetings. We've had people who have been able to go to a meeting once we started up but did not have time to get to the office and pick up their packets. It's created some confusion. And I, for one, want that to stop. So I would very much like you all to call the office, get an appointment before the 9th of July. Make sure, go over, bring it, bring what you have. Don't walk in empty-handed because it won't do you any good. Bring every bit of information you have. This is about our third iteration of this particular site. I want you to have what you need. We're going to start moving forward. That's what we do. We move forward. So make sure you call the office, make those appointments with Ken, one at a time. All right? We are still not allowed to meet as a group. So I want you to do that.
Joyce?
Yes?
The assumption there is that Kenny has a list of items.
There's no assumption. Ken has been information that we should have.
Yeah.
And we have to make sure we have it.
I'm with you, but I'm just saying it might streamline the process a little bit. If Kenny generated a list of items that we should have, and then we...
No, no. I want you to make an appointment with Ken, bring your things in, and go over them there. Too easy to confuse some things. I did see that, Ken. Too easy to confuse some of the old things with some of the new things. I mean, make the effort, please, to make the appointment and go in and see Ken. Thank you. The other thing I would like to bring up at this point, since there seems to be a lot of issues flying around this, is as a planning... as a planning board, I know some of you will remember this. This is this little piece of paper, one page. It's called Board Member Schizophrenia: Quasi-Judicial Versus Legislative Roles: How You Should Be Acting. When we're in a meeting, we are quasi-judicial. It means we're on a case. Our job is to judge a pending application. The rules we follow are quite simple. This is from Southern... Tom, you might remember this. This is from Southern Maine. "We don't talk or email about an application outside of the meeting, either to board members or the public. We try to be as impartial as possible, concentrating only on whether the application meets the written standards. Only discuss the waivers that we have the authority to give." One thing is very important. Consistency in interpretation is important. If we discover that in the past, in a past practice, we were wrong, don't keep doing it. Correct the mistake and go forward. The popularity of the project, who the applicant is, and whether you personally like the applicant or the project are almost irrelevant. Our duty is to process the application as efficiently and as fairly as possible, sticking to the ordinance. The only relevant public comment is with respect to whether the application meets the standards and whether procedures and submissions are in order. That brings me to a very important point. We recently have been getting letters, all kinds, from... or copies of, from DEP. We do not rule DEP. DEP is the state. It is not our job to rule what DEP has. That is their job. Our job is to exactly do this. To make sure the application meets the standards and whether the procedures and submissions are in order. That's what we're going to do. Okay? Forward. When we get further down the line to public hearing and to final, there will be other things we take into consideration, but at this point, our job is simply as the acting planning board. It is not as an arm of the DEP. And I want you all to remember that. Thank you. I am now off my soapbox. And we will go on to Martel Estates, Aine Martel, 760 Youngs Ridge Road, map 217, Lot 028-030. Application for an 18-lot subdivision. Review the preliminary plan application. Good evening, Mr. Jones.
Good evening. How's the board doing tonight?
Looking forward to a holiday, I believe.
Yeah, I think it's fast approaching.
There you go. We had asked for some things to come forward. Have those come forward?
Yes, we did update our plans, and we went through the letter that Ben had sent from North Star, the comments, and we addressed all the comments. We worked with Ben on some of the comments, and so those plans that you have tonight are updated. And I also sent back a comment letter with all our comments from the review. So I think at this point, we're got a very complete set of plans and ready to go to the next step.
Thank you, Ben. I want to make sure every member, you have the... I'm sorry, these are so small, it's taking me a minute. You have the latest, and that's the only set of plans you should be looking at. You have them, Tom?
Yes.
Yes.
Dennis? I see Leslie looking at them. Gavin, you have them as well? I see you looking at them. Thank you. Very good. Having looked at these and gone through them, are there any questions from the board?
Just to verify the plan that we're discussing tonight. It has a date in the lower left-hand column of revised per town comments. See where I am, Joyce?
I'm sorry, I don't, simply because it's so small.
Okay. Because of the left of the...
62620.
That is correct.
Okay, I'm with you. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Very good. Sorry about that. I guess I need stronger reading glasses. Leslie, any questions?
No.
Gavin?
I'll wait till we go through the standard.
Very good. Tom, any questions?
How do you propose to fold in the Ben Smith's commentary on this?
We're gonna go through the standards.
Let me just clarify something with you, Joyce. We had, on the 25th of June, if I'm not mistaken, we had a little question at the end of a affirmative vote on the nature of what we had just passed. And I tried to make the point that we are not accepting the plan at this time in the affirmative vote that was cast, but we were merely making a statement verifying receipt of the plan.
We did accept the application.
Yeah, and I think I'm following Tom as well on the response from Jones and Beach dated June 19th, response number one, where the planning board voted on the preliminary application and deemed it complete. You guys voted to accept it, not complete.
Thank you, Ken.
And I think that was one of the only ones, and I...
That is the one that... I think there was one other thing in there, wasn't there?
Reference a sidewalk or something proposed for a day or so ago or something.
Right.
Also inaccurate.
Yeah, there was another inaccuracy in there. It was a proposed sidewalk for today, and we had not set that up. Yes, Tom?
Just to be sure that we understand where we are in this process, we, in the vote, in the affirmative, we were making a vote to verify receipt, not necessarily completion or approval thereof.
There was no approval at all.
Okay, thank you.
Accepting the paperwork. And we have to get used to using the words "accepting" and "approving," so... Okay. Jim, anything from you?
Oh, I'm all set at this time.
Good. Dennis? All right. And I'm going to suggest we go through the standards for a preliminary plan.
Do we have to do that, Joyce, where Ben did it?
Well, we've gone through it, and all of you should have it. Do you have it? Where Ben's gone through it? Now, I know you do, so... You got it last week. Yes, Ken?
There's no date on the checklist that Ben initialed, but it's the same one sent from Jones. I think Brad X'd the boxes, and then Ben initialed.
Exactly.
Been through for preliminary.
Yeah, exactly. So it's the one you got the week last week, a week ago today.
Yeah.
Yes, Tom?
Are there any omissions that Ben had remarked upon?
There are no omissions.
That was a question to Ken.
I don't know if Tom's been... was on the sidewalk back in February, the cold winter day, and if Tom wants to go back out, set an appointment, we'll get together and go out there.
My question was, Kenny, are you in sync with Ben's letter of 61620 commenting on the completion of the submission?
Correct. He's gone through the checklist. Everything is there for the preliminary. And where it's only preliminary, we can still, as we move on, we can still ask for anything the board deems needs, as far as additional information or something like that, as we move on to a final plan.
Okay, thank you.
Does that sound right, Brad?
Brad, you have to unmute yourself.
Yes, Ken, that's my understanding, yes.
Leslie, any questions on that?
No, not at this time. Well, actually, Ben had made two recommendations in his memorandum dated June 16th on the second page, so he's made his recommendations for the board.
Yes. The recommendations that Brad made in his letter of the 16th were that we should vote to accept the complete application. The second one was we should make a determination on whether or not a public hearing should be scheduled. So anyway, let's go back to the first one. I would like to entertain a motion to accept the preliminary plan. We've already accepted it. Thank you. I would like to entertain a motion to approve the preliminary plan as we have it. Please remember, accepting preliminary plan and approving it does not mean we can't ask for more information. Yes, Gavin?
Are we gonna read through the standards or just approve the thing?
Well, I think you have the standards in front of you.
Yes, I have a question on a couple of them. I was just wondering, I should bring it up now or until I get to them?
No, let's... We have a motion on the floor, and you can bring them up when we go to discussion, okay?
Who made the motion, Joyce?
Dennis did.
He did?
Yeah.
I'll do it again, Gavin. I make a motion, we approve the preliminary plan for Martel Estates, Aine Martel, 760 Youngs Ridge Road.
I'll second that.
Action for an 18-lot subdivision.
Leslie?
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion. Okay, Gavin?
Are we gonna read through the standards?
You're going to bring up a question, you said. We're not going through the standards.
Okay, yes, I do have two questions.
Okay. Go ahead, please.
Under mandatory submissions, number 13, zoning district and zoning boundaries affecting the subdivision.
Yeah. What is your question?
We've received information that part of the project may be in the resource protection district. I would ask that the applicant prove and show that it's not in the resource protection district.
Yeah, we have looked at that early on, and if you look at the plan that the town has, it's a map of the entire town, and we are not in the resource protection district.
Yes, I'm referring to the verbiage that speaks of two acres or greater slopes, 20% or more. The map has some inaccuracy.
Yeah, so if you look at the updated plans and we go to the overall sheet, you can see the steep slope, and that's at 20%. And it's shown like a shaded color on the map. And you notice there's a couple of sections back on, in between Buzzard Road and then along the lake, but those areas are less than an acre in size. So that would be below the threshold.
Okay, Dennis?
Whether you have some land or not, town that meets the definition of what should be in resource protection, if you know, Gavin, we've had this discussion many times, we know the maps are not accurate, but the maps were adopted by the town meeting, and that's what we're legally bound to go by. So I guess my point is, if it's not a town document saying it's resource protection, then it isn't, until it is a town document, because we both know there's many, many parcels in town that aren't on that map, and there's some parcels on there that shouldn't be on the map. So until the town clarifies what is and when it updates, I don't think it's incumbent on the applicant to prove that it's not. It's up to the town meeting to change the maps.
I was referring strictly to the verbiage.
Ken?
Just to clarify on Dennis's statements that the maps were inaccurate, the maps are actually very accurate. There's gonna be a glitch here and there, but I believe there's a court case that decided that the map is the map, the verbiage is secondary. I know our zoning ordinance hasn't caught up to that court case, but the property owner has to be able to rely on a map versus interpretation from me today, the new person tomorrow, the new person the day after, and if interpretations change every day, especially with RP, it would be very difficult for the property owners to understand if they're in or out. So that's another area in our zoning ordinance that probably needs work, the verbiage that the map is the map. We've had it looked at several times by people that thought they've gone out to the ground, and the maps are holding pretty good over, we're probably going almost 10 years on this addition of the Shoreland Zoning Map that was adopted by the DEP.
Thank you, Ken.
Tom, did you have another question?
I have a quick question, just in Kenny's memory. There was a citation in the main Shoreland zoning work that we had to update for a number of years back, and it dealt with steep slopes, where they undeveloped strip of land of 1,000 feet or more. You recall that, Kenny? And we had it colored in yellow. And there were some places that we, as I recall, were resigned to, while all of these places are subject to a site evaluation to confirm the map. But I, as far as I can tell, this might be the first instance when, uh, uh, that citation from shoreline zoning, state shoreline zoning, might come into play. You remember what I was speaking about?
If we've had, um, the, the DEP calls it the pork chop exemption or something like that on, on how it was designed. Um, we've had, had one issue on that and it was on Passon's Point or Red Gate Lane. And when it went to the zoning board, the zoning board granted them the variance on the, on the issue of the map, uh, where it was resource protection. They were able to find an area that wasn't and turn up the map.
So did, have you glanced at the, uh, proposal and question in the shoreline zone, uh, areas? Are any of those, uh, subject to that, uh, interpretation of the state? And would they be validly, um, designated as being an RP because of the length of the shoreline that is undeveloped between two adjacent, uh, lots?
It's, um, I don't think it's continuous enough to be an RP. And if we did call it RP, we're gonna lose in court. If, if, when, when it got challenged, I believe. But I, I don't believe it's continuous enough. It's broken up, there's just a little bits of pieces in between that breaks it up.
Thank you.
Dennis?
I don't believe, uh, I, I, I think we're talking about something, uh, different because this isn't part of the shoreline district. Only the bottom two hundred and fifty feet is part of the shoreline district. So I, I don't believe that the shoreline district rules apply.
Dennis, he's talking about on sheet number two, EXOVR, EXOVR. If you look on that top left where it says sheet three, and it's not, it's not broken into lots on that, but there's a cross-tash area that says, uh, slopes greater than twenty percent. And it has the hundred-foot setback line in that overlay, along with the FEMA flood line, too.
What sheet is that, Ken?
That's different than the shoreline.
That's not shoreline, though, is it?
That's different than the shoreline.
Right where it says sheet three on that, at, uh, top left side, that's gonna be shoreline.
On C three?
I should've, I should've hit the lake with a blue marker for you.
On C three, Ken?
Or A three?
A three.
Sheet, sheet number two of twenty-eight.
Yeah. I think I've got it. So who's down here?
This radius lady.
Yeah.
Cross hatch.
All this up here. Move. That's all because of the slope, Ken?
The cross-tash area is just identifying slopes of twenty percent or greater. And there's some at the top of the hill, there's some down in the swale area, and there's a little bit in, at shoreline zoning on the lakeside.
Okay, so what we're talking about in reality is two different things. We're talking about the shoreline district and then we're talking about the steep slope above the shoreline district. Is that my understanding?
There's four areas on the site that are steep slopes.
Right.
One of those areas is in the shoreline district.
Yeah, down bottom.
Yes, that's going to be the steep slopes in the shoreline zone. And if continuous greater than, um, two acres, then it would have been on our shoreline zoning maps.
It's not.
And, and deflected as RP if it was greater than, I think a thousand feet without any structures, is how that verbiage is read, if that sounds right, Tom. And there is a, there which even makes it more complicated.
Yeah, because he's not touching, touching over the property. He's not building in that section or anything.
Um, they, they're designed for lots.
In that, in that gully, there's a house?
No, I'm on, uh, right up in the area where it says sheet, C three.
Hold on, guys.
This is why it's so much fun just to kick you under the table while we're talking in a room, Dennis.
Right. As I know, I like to argue anyway. And then if I lose my place, it's a lot harder for me to argue.
Here's three, C three.
C three.
Yeah, I'm actually not on sheet three. I'm on that second sheet and it's just on that upper left where it does say, sheet, C three.
Okay, keep coming.
Hold on, you give me a second, I'll tell you up something.
EXOVR.
EXOVR.
Okay.
Upper left hand.
Upper left-hand corner, we, we got it over here, yeah. Your directions are good.
That's what we're looking at.
Incoming.
If you're on sheet EXOVR.
Right.
He's holding it up. It's that upper left-hand corner.
Yeah, we're looking at it.
Okay, the blue is the lake, the yellow is the steep slope area, and the pink is the two fifty setback from the water.
Oh.
So you're.
Some discretion how big that property is.
Just this little tiny thing.
You're talking the lower piece of property, not the gully that goes down through from, um, Buzzard Road.
Exactly, yeah, there's no development proposed in that, um.
Okay, I was confused, Ken, I apologize.
But again, I don't, it may follow some of the verbiage of the town, but it's not mapped by the town, so, uh, and having a structure down there, then it, it also probably isn't going to meet the town's definition as well.
Is that what existing structure is now?
Ex- exactly, yeah, between that and the, um, Westerly property.
Right. So, like I said, there's an existing structure there now. I don't know. I'm, I'm done talking because I, I, I'm fine.
Have we any other questions pertaining to the standards? Gavin?
Yes, I have a question on number twenty. The existing, area of existing four is permitted to be removed and converted to lawn.
What's your question?
Yes, I would refer you to page thirty-five of the subdivision regs. It's that top paragraph, number three. Last two lines.
Can you read them, Gavin?
Sure. Within areas subject to the state mandated shoreline zone beyond the buffer strip designated above and out of the two fifty from the normal high water line of a water body or upland edge of a wetland, clear openings for development, including but not limited to principal and accessory structures, driveways, and sewage disposal areas shall not exceed in the aggregate twenty-five percent of the lot area or ten thousand square feet, whichever is greater, including land previously developed. My question is, how large are those building envelopes, including driveways, sewage disposal areas, accessory and principal structures? Do they exceed ten thousand square feet?
I read that on the plans, Gavin, somewhere.
Yeah, right now, I believe those building envelopes are, uh, we made them a little bigger on the, on the lakefront lots and, um, I believe it was thirty-five hundred square feet, uh, for the houses.
Actually, it's four thousand.
Four thousand, four thousand square feet for the homes. And the driveways themselves in the shoreline district. Remember, we, these, our building setbacks are a hundred feet from the lake. So we're gonna be back, uh, you know, back at least a hundred feet from the lake and then, uh, the driveways will be another, about a hundred and fifty feet to get us back to, to the house in that shoreline district. So, so it's really pretty limited. And remember, there's the four thousand square foot building envelope is, is probably gonna be a smaller home in there. We, we maximized what the maximum size house that we would envision that would be in there. So I think it's, uh, if anything, it's probably, uh, the, the houses will be smaller than that in, in size when they're built.
Could you give us a calculation of the principal accessory structures, driveways, and sewage disposal areas in terms of the square footage, please?
Yep, so like I say, the, the houses are four thousand and the driveways are gonna be another three thousand, so probably seven thousand per lot. Seven thousand square feet.
Does that include septic area?
Uh, six, uh, yes, uh, seven thousand, uh, with the septic area, yes, yep.
Maybe we could just put a note that they are not to exceed ten thousand somewhere on the final plan?
Yeah, we could do that, yep.
Thank you.
Gavin, what, what section were you in? I missed it, uh, I was still on the other page.
I'm in the subdivision regs, page thirty-five off.
Protection of important shoreline areas.
Yes, number three under that heading.
Yep, top of the page, I got, I just wanted to tab it, thank you.
We make that, you know, that can be a, uh, you know, we'll make sure it's on the, uh, final plan.
Sure.
Got a question, Joyce?
Yes, Tom?
Uh, Brad, how many lots are proposed with shore frontage?
Uh, there's only three lots with shore frontage.
And if we look on that drawing that we were on previously, EX dash OVR, I'm trying to find another sheet where those lots delineated.
Yeah, if you go to C three, which is, uh, sheet twelve of, uh, of twenty-eight.
Yeah, gotcha.
That probably, that probably shows it the best.
But you show a northerly lot line on, on that. And, and above that, there's a, it says it's text map, two seventeen lot, twenty-five, I think it is. So where, where do we find a, a map that illustrates what I'm asking you about?
Yeah, so if, if you look all the, that map that you picked out, two seventeen, twenty-five, you, you'll see the three houses depicted. Um, and the three lots are, uh, you know, they come off of the hammerhead and there's, there's three lots with shore frontage.
Oh, okay, on the.
Yeah, you look at, you look at, it's like a dotted line with a double dot line.
Yeah, I'm with you now.
That's your property line, so, and, um, yeah, so the, but there's only three in it.
And just for clarification, no other lots have shore front privileges?
Um, that is correct, yep.
Thank you, Brad.
Sure.
Any other questions?
I think just, uh, just for Brad, um, where are you at with your site log with the DEP?
Yeah, so I, I did wanna go through that, um.
I'm gonna, we, we have a motion on the floor and we're in discussion.
Sorry about that.
No problem.
This is pertinent information.
Yeah, and I'm gonna take it from him, but right now, it's not pertinent to the motion on the floor. So, um, don't forget, whatever we do, we can always ask for and get more information. And that's what we're going to have to do. So, we do have a motion on the floor. Dennis, do you wanna repeat your motion?
I make a motion, we approve the preliminary plan for Martell Estates, seven, Young Ridge Road, map, two seventeen lots twenty-eight to thirty, application for eighteen lot subdivision.
Second. Okay, we'll take a roll call vote.
Quick question to clarify the vote. Dennis, what lots were you pertaining to there?
I, I, with twenty-eight lot subdivision. Is that right?
Well, it's, uh, to be concise, I guess, uh, um, I would wanna know with the tax map and lots numbers. I think it's, um, it should read, at the top of your, at the top of the sheet, it says Martell Estates, tax map, two sixteen lots three dash one through three dash seven, and tax map seventeen.
I see it now, Tom. I will change my motion.
Yep.
Um, I make a motion to approve the preliminary plan for Martell Estates, tax map, two sixteen lots three dash one through three dash seven, tax map, two seventeen lots twenty-six, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty, seven sixty and seven seventy-six on Ridge Road Act in Maine. Is that better, Tom?
Yeah, what, what do you suppose that seven sixty and seven seventy-six pertains to?
Uh, the two nine-one-one addresses for the, uh, houses that he owns.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you, Dennis.
Yeah.
Okay, Leslie?
Yes.
Okay, we've, we've amended the motion, so.
Second it, yeah, so I'll second that.
All right, thank you. Um, I'm gonna see a hand up and I honestly, uh, give me one second, please. I am not, look familiar, but I don't know who you are. But I'm glad I made you smile. Uh, just with a shake of your head, are you with Mr. Jones or are you with?
Yes, I am.
You are with Mr. Jones?
And sorry, and I apologize that you don't recognize me. I'm an attorney for Mr. Martell. I work with Jim Katsifakis, who, who can't be here tonight. Um, he's on vacation as a, as a matter of fact. But I just wanted to bring to the board's attention, um, uh, one issue, if I may. And it, it relates to the, it relates to the pending motion. First of all, um, I think the motion would be to deem whether, uh, whether to deem the application, uh, uh, complete and then whether to hold a public hearing. And I believe that there is an attorney for Jelley here as well, uh, who has some arguments that she would like to raise, uh, relevant to that, uh, determination. And, uh, the applicant has no, uh, objection to that and the board might want it for the sake of fairness and for the sake of making a complete record. Since it relates to the, to the pending motion is, is my understanding that the board might want to, to hear from her. So, and the applicant does not object.
Yeah, and I said, I'd like to add something myself. The, up on top of the plan, you'll see map, two sixteen lots three dash one through three seven. Those are actually the carryover. Uh, those are actually the carryover from the Buzzell Road lots. And, uh, the, these plans, uh, you gotta remember, we're, we submit the plans, we're submitting to DEP at the same time we submit to the town. So that, that's really a carryover. And I would say that those lots are not included, they're not, they are shown on our plans, but not detailed on our plans. And, uh.
Sorry, Buzzell, excuse me, Brad, Buzzell Road is not something we are looking at. That is a done deal as far
Great.
Board is concerned.
So those, when you look at.
I know they, I know you're reading it off here.
Yep.
But as far as we're concerned and what we're doing, that has nothing to do with us right now. And, um, again, it should not be part of the motion. I wish, and, um, I should have picked it up and I didn't. I apologize. Um, Joe, uh, as far as, um, as opening this up to, uh, anyone outside of Mr. Martell or his people, that simply is not happening. We are going to go with our motion up or down, uh, and this is on the completeness of it. Always keeping in mind, if we find something is not there, we can go back and ask for it. The time for opposition to speak is at the public hearing. And if you have a little patience with us, you will see we are planning on a public hearing in the near future. So. Uh, just give me, uh, uh, one second on, this is ridiculous, um.
Right, I'm gonna change the whole thing.
On the, on the, uh, uh, I'm gonna, I'm going to, um, Ken? Uh, you've gone off of my page. Let me move, let me, oh, there you are. Ken, I am going to ask, uh, Dennis to send his motion and restate a more proper, if you will, motion. For the sake of clarity, Dennis.
I make a motion to approve the preliminary plan
as an 18.
As complete as presented to the planning board. When was that date? I apologize. You got that date, Brad?
Six. Yes, the, uh, revision date is, uh, June 26th.
June 26th.
As of June 26th, um, for Martell Estates, when 18 lots subdivision.
Second. Second.
That's a lot clearer.
That is a lot clearer. Again, any discussion? Hearing on, go for a vote. Leslie?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
The chair votes in the affirmative. Thank you, everyone.
We'll get through this.
Uh, we'll get through this Zoom stuff. I know. I thank everybody for their patience. Brad? We need, we need everything from you. If you haven't sent us, you haven't given us questions by the ninth, can you do that?
Um.
We just want everything, you know, you possibly have.
Now, what was that, Joyce? What, what did you, uh? At this point, we're, we've got our.
Ken?
Yep.
Ken, take over, please.
So, we're moving to the final plan. Brad, we have a final plan for the ninth?
Yep.
And then we'll have that reviewed by North Star and give him a week for the 16th or so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, and then with the board's permission, I'd like to set a, uh, public hearing for the 23rd. It will be a Zoom public hearing. Leslie?
Uh, I'm good with that.
Gavin?
Yes, I'll make a motion. We set up a public hearing for the 26th.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second from Dennis. Tom? Public hearing the 23rd?
Yes.
Thank you. Ken?
Just clarification, we're talking July 23rd.
Yes, we are talking July 23rd.
Thank you.
Well, I've told everybody else. Did I tell the world? No, I'm not going to. The next is a very special day, not that day.
It's Joyce's birthday the next day, everybody.
Point of clarification, Joyce?
Sorry?
A point of clarification. At that meeting, what are going to be the ground rules for hearing from, uh, legal representatives of the applicant?
It's a public hearing, Tom. We hear from everybody.
Okay, thank you.
Hearing from the butters and, uh, everyone who wants to speak. That's what the public hearing is for.
Thank you.
And Joe, apologies to you. I honestly, you know, sorry about that. That's all I can say.
Good problem.
Recognize you. Ken, you had your hand up.
Six, 6:30?
6:30. Hey Brad, you're good with us?
Yeah, that, that sounds good. That works for me.
Okay, we will be going with the butters first and then, uh, we'll go that way. Uh, cause I know there are a lot of people that want to be heard, but I, I would really like to hear from the people closest to the project. Thank you all very, very much.
Before you move on.
Yes.
From that, Joyce. Is this public hearing going to be run the way the slutmen do a public hearing or we gonna? I mean, we don't want to limit what people have to say, but we also don't want to have somebody like me talk for half hours straight and bore everybody to death, so.
I think what we're going to do is probably try and, um, let everybody have their say, but we would, I would like it to be where we stick to uh, one subject. Once it's discussed, it's discussed. We don't keep discussing it to death. I don't want to hear six people telling me the same thing pro or con. Um, and I certainly will have to count on people being reasonable with the amount of time they use. And also, we'll have to be, I guess in this, in the time of COVID, we're going to have to be kind to one another. Not talking over one another. Microphones will have to be muted and you will have to be recognized by the chair. And it does take time to have that happen. I mean, um, tonight, um, I actually have over three pages of people to go through. And I just knocked some of you right off the screen, as it were. But, um, I have three full pages to, to go through. So I'm trying to tell you how many people I have on here. And I'm not getting it, but that's okay. So, let's see, 5, 10, 15, 20, 25. So with three full pages, that tells me there are close to 75 people watching this tonight. So, everybody's going to have to be kind. The one thing I will not accept at any point, and I will mute people, is if there is any type of, um, uh, personal attacks or foul language. Just doesn't, isn't going to happen. So, um, on a happier note. Brad, Joe, everybody, thank you very much. Tom, you have a question?
Uh, in the planning for this public hearing, could we make, uh, room for an anticipated good number of, uh, folks that should be, uh, uh, or might be interested in speaking and, um, either do it by the clock or, uh?
That's just what we talked about, Tom.
Okay.
Just, uh, you know, everybody will have their fair share. If it goes too long, we will have to, you know, give them a wrap it up, you know, notice, wrap it up. And like I said, we're not going to hear the same thing five times from five different people. One is enough, once is enough. And, uh, if there's count, point, counterpoint, that's fine, that's fine. We will be fair. We will be fair. And we'll be kind to each other in our speaking. So, okay?
Yeah.
What I really want to say is have a wonderful 4th of July weekend, Brad. Joe?
Yeah, thanks a lot. I appreciate your time tonight.
Thank, thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, bye-bye. Okay, I've got to move my, uh, screen around again. Oh, I do see. Uh, new business. Jennifer Bickford. We're going to give it a minute. All these, um, booms you keep hearing are people going off screen. Val, you are here. I see you.
I think I made it, yep.
Yes, good evening, good evening.
Evening, dear.
Uh, this is new business. Uh, 153 Broad Map 216 dash 002, additional use application to, uh, process and sell firewood.
Right.
Okay. Excuse me. Everybody who is leaving, kindly leave. If you're staying, kindly, and you're not here for the Bickfords, kindly mute your microphones. Thank you. All right, Val?
Yeah, not a problem.
So why don't you tell us what, uh, what you're doing, what you want to do?
I just want to be able to, uh, sell firewood out of my yard. I don't, I don't advertise it. I don't do anything like that. I have my basic customers. I do roughly 150 to 170 cord a year. And that's pretty much, uh, the down low on it. I just, with everything going along with, uh, I don't know, I just don't want to have any problems, I guess. So I'm assuming if I have a permit, I'll be all right.
Okay. Uh, Ken, I see you have an update on this.
Uh, we've been working with Mr. Bickford for a while. He had thoughts of selling and moving to another side of town. And, uh, that's kind of on hold right now, so he's looking to have a small business at his house, which he's currently opening, uh, running. And it's one of those things that just grows a little bit every time. And now he's grown enough where he's tricked into a conditional use. It'd be great to call it a contracted yard, but we don't have that as a permitted use in town. Uh, we just look at it as accessory to, uh, the home that he has. It's a little bigger than a home occupation because you can see it as you drive by. Um, I don't know, Val, you've probably been five, eight years running it now, maybe?
Yeah, about five.
Yeah, we've, we've never received any complaints from anybody or anything like that, but Mr. Bickford would just, like he said, uh, go through the conditional use process, see if there's any concerns the board has, uh, address them and, uh, go from there.
Okay. Turn this over to the board. Questions?
Should we have a site walk here? I would think so.
I'm not sure. How does the rest of the board feel? I don't think it's necessary, frankly.
Neither do I.
I don't think it's necessary either.
How do you discern what's going on?
Ken?
Um, you guys all know what's going on because it's your side of town or you're familiar with the process. If Tom wants to go out with me, we can go by, uh, Tom Gavin or something like that. If it's just two, it's not a board. We're still in that area of can we do sidewalks? Can we have groups? We haven't done that yet since we've been shut down, so uh, maybe that's something Tom and if Gavin wants to, Gavin's probably familiar with it. Uh, it's right before the Buzzell Road subdivision there. Uh, so Gavin's probably familiar with it as well. So if Tom wants to go out, we can, uh, make a trip and drive through the Martell Estates and take a look at this at the same time if you want.
Yeah, we can work on that.
Okay, that would work for me. Leslie, that works for you?
Yeah. I mean, I drive by it every day, so.
And, and I've been by it 100 times now. Um, Gavin, would you be interested in going or are you familiar with it?
I've seen it from the road. Uh, I'd like to hear a little bit more about it before I start.
Okay. Jim, how about you? Do you want to see it or are you familiar with it?
I'm very much familiar with it.
Okay. Dennis?
No, I'm upset. I, I just want to approve the thing tonight.
Okay. Um, Ken, it looks like you and Tom could make, uh, you know, go see it. I guess if that's what he wants.
I'll speak to Ken later. Thank you.
Um, one of the things, Val, that I've been wondering about, have you thought of simply putting a fence around it? So it's not quite as visible from the road?
Uh, no, I haven't actually. I really never thought of it. I mean, it's just wood.
Oh, I know.
You know, I, I mean, the pile's going to be higher than the fence anyway, so I mean, what, what would the fence, I mean, do? I mean, I guess, just so people can't see the wood or they don't like the machine out there? I mean, I don't.
You never know what people do or don't like.
Well, I know. That's some, well, I'd say, like I said, I, I don't want to, for what's going on down the street for me. That's kind of why I want the, you know, to get a thing. So I don't want somebody, you know, I only said a word about what anybody else is doing. I kind of feel like I don't want anybody coming in my yard and telling me what I have to do either, you know?
I understand where you're coming from.
Yeah.
Understand completely. I truly do.
I try to keep my grass mowed. I try to keep the windows clean, you know?
I've, I've been by your house 100 times. I have a friend that lives just down the road from you.
Yeah.
So, uh, anytime I go.
I don't try to cut wood. You know, I don't cut wood early. I don't cut wood late. I don't cut when it rains. Takes me about an hour and a half to cut a load of wood. And like I said, that's roughly under, little over maybe 200 hours a year that it's actually the woods being cut.
Uh-huh.
So, I mean, I'm not, you know what I mean, I'm not selling thousands of cords or anything like that. It's roughly 12 cords each truckload that I have delivered, so it's roughly anywhere from 10 to 15 trucks. And they don't come in, he don't deliver before 7:00 and they don't, they never come afternoon time, so maybe 2:00, maybe once or twice. But they always come in the morning, then out there along.
So you would say your, your hours of operation would be?
I don't start before 7:30. And, uh, I don't work, I, I rare, very rarely ever am out there after 3:00. And I don't, you know, like I said, I don't cut when it's raining. I don't cut when it's snowing. I don't cut if it's freezing. You know, like.
Keeping it.
Say again?
Keeping it safe.
Yeah, so, uh, trying. I would take no fingers off, you know?
Please, please, please. We wouldn't want that to happen either. And how, when, I, I'm getting the feeling you do this sporadically.
Yeah, it's just one, and normally, like I said, I don't, I don't have any signs out there or anything. It's just the normal people that I cut for. You know, they'll just call me and when I get one, I'll cut one. And.
You don't cut on Sundays?
Well, if I do, it wouldn't be, you know what I mean, it'd be just one, you know what I mean, it would be one or two. I don't cut more than two. The most I can do in a day, if I'm out there by myself, is probably three to four. I mean, you know, time you cut it, get it in the truck, deliver it, come back. There's just, you know, there's only so much time, you know?
Right, right.
I don't have any lights out there, so I'm never cutting, you know, after, well, after September, October, at the dock, so really never after 4:00, 4:30 during the fall time. And, and in the winter, I try not to cut any if I don't have to. I usually get about 20 to 25 between December and February.
Right, right. Anybody have any other questions? Gavin? Gavin?
Could we pin down those hours? I'm hearing 7 to 4, seven days a week.
Well, I thought I heard 7 to 3. What is it, Val?
Uh, like I said, it's more, it's more sporadic, like you say. It's, uh, like I said, it comes out to about 200 hours a year.
All right, but if you were working a day, what would you like your hours?
Well, right around 7:30 to, say, 4:00.
Okay.
And Sunday, Sunday definitely not, um, I mean, maybe 9:00 to noon at the most. I mean, it's not.
Val, didn't you say that sometimes, once in a while, a truck will come at 7:00?
Yeah, roughly around 7:00. That's normally when, when they pull in. Time they get out of there, it's around 7:30, you know?
Right, but that's why, that's why myself, I'd like to see your hours start at 7:00.
Yeah, 7 to 4.
Because that's kind of like when the noise would start, whether you were doing, the logging truck was doing it.
Right.
Uh, to cover your permit.
Yep. That's not a problem.
Uh, yeah. Anything else?
Not for me.
Gavin?
Could we read through the standards?
Conditional use, of course.
888 in the zoning ordinance.
Yep, 888 in the zoning board. Hang on, I've got it here. Okay, does everybody have their zoning book with them? Zoning ordinance, great book. I'll start reading them. 888. Tom, you don't have your book, do you?
Yes.
You have it, okay. Standards applicable to conditional use, 6.6, 3.7. Should be the responsibility of the applicant to demonstrate that the proposed use meets all of the following criteria. The board shall approve the application unless it makes written findings that one or more of these criteria have not been met. Okay? Again, I'm going to ask, if you're not on the board, kindly mute your microphones. The use will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic, aquatic life, birds, or wildlife habitats. Yes. Since we do have a quorum, we will continue. However, uh, honestly, I do believe we were at the point of, uh, on the standards applicable, Gavin, we were just talking about it will not have an adverse of impact on spawning grounds, et cetera. Yes? Ken?
Yes, true.
Did you appoint Jim as a voting member?
No, uh, yeah, uh, Tom was a voting member tonight.
Yeah, but just where he's not here, just in case Jim ends up voting on this.
Jim? Consider yourself appointed.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, you know, I, I realize Tom isn't here, and, uh, Val, you're being very patient, so I'm going to try your patience once more. Uh, since we talked earlier about the fact that Yoli is no longer with us, Jim, we will be appointing you as a permanent member. You will no longer be on a, uh, on a, um, an alternate member.
Understood.
So congratulations. There we go. All right, to this. Gavin, where did you go?
I was just closing the door. Sorry, Joyce.
Okay, there we go. All right, so we've got no impact on fish. The use will conserve shore cover, nothing to do with that, as well as actual access to water. The use is. NA. Use is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Yes.
Trafficked access to the site meets the standards contained in the ordinance and traffic congestion, uh, which there won't be. Correct?
How are we doing on site distance?
Fine, on site, site distance. The law municipal flood hazard protection regulations, oh, it's fine. Adequate provision for the disposal of wastewater, solid waste haven't made. No solid waste, Val?
No.
Stormwater drainage system capable of handling a 25-year storm without adverse impact on adjacent properties has been designed. How'd you make out Sunday? Val? Got to let yourself talk.
I don't, I don't know, like.
How'd you make out Sunday?
Fine. The, uh, the other side of the road, not so good, but.
Okay, you, you got to hit your spacebar.
There's a crown in the road, a town road that actually curves to the other side of the road, and where it does that, water just goes right on the other side, and they've, well, about four years ago, they reditched it on that side, and all the water went, goes on the other side of the road now, so.
Okay. Okay. Um, adequate provisions for transportation, storage, and disposal of any hazard material has been made. Val, why don't you just leave yourself unmuted? You're still muted.
And you think we should ask for waste oil?
Yeah, as soon as he gets unmuted, we will. Uh, there you, don't, don't touch it. Don't touch it, you're unmuted.
I didn't touch it.
Okay. You're going to be one of the group here pretty soon.
Yeah.
Okay, Gavin had a question for you.
I was just wondering how much waste oil you generated from your equipment?
Waste oil as far as like the tractor?
Yeah, when you do an oil change on site.
What do I do with it? I just, a guy comes up from, uh, uh, borough there and takes it, and he puts it in his waste oil burner. Which is, that tractor holds like, I don't know, a gallon? It's only a three-cylinder, you know, diesel engine. Holds like, I, literally, I think actually is six quarts, I think. So, I mean, it's very, very minimal. And whatever I, and the, uh, the machine itself, the oils to chain, I run some of the waste oil through the cha, for the chain. So, that's pretty much how it goes.
You don't end up with much.
Say again?
You don't end up with much oil, is what you're saying?
No, very little. None going on, I don't, I don't pour any on the ground. I mean, if that's what you're asking, I don't, I try to make sure I keep it fairly clean over there.
Sometimes we ask for a letter from the person who takes the oil from you, but I'm not sure it's necessary in this case, depends on what the board thinks.
I really don't think there's, uh, an issue with the oil, it's so small amount.
Agree with Jim.
I agree with Jim also.
Okay. That's fine. So, uh, again, um, a stormwater drainage system capable of handling the storm, um, that's not an issue. Adequate provision, okay. Adequate provision to control soil erosion and sedimentation have been made. NA?
Right.
There's adequate water supply to meet the demands of the proposed use and for fire protection prop, uh, purposes.
NA.
I don't know. What do you have for water supply there?
Of light.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't, I mean, holes, I mean, beating from my house, I mean, I, I don't know. Like I said, I, I've never had a problem. I mean, I don't, I mean, I don't have a fire hydrant or anything. That's what you're asking. I mean, I don't.
If you did, you'd be the only one in actin'.
Yeah.
Gavin?
Do you have a fire extinguisher on your operating machine?
I don't, but I, you know, I can put one there. I have one in my, I have one in all my.
Take care of this.
Yeah, I have one in all my trucks, but I don't, I don't actually have one out there on the machine itself.
That could be the condition.
Yeah, that could, that could be there. Provisions for buffer strips and on-site landscaping provide adequate protection to neighboring properties from detrimental free fees of the development, such as noise, glare, fumes, dust, odor, and the like. You're pretty wide open there.
Yeah. I mean, I, no dust. I mean, I, you know, unless the truck's driving in or out, nothing, anybody else going up there to drive it would be, I mean, I don't.
Think noise would be the biggest issue.
I think it speaks a lot that the, uh, he's been in business for five years and has had no complaint. I agree with that. Jim? Dennis?
I'm all set.
Okay. So all performance standards in this ordinance applicable to the proposed use will be met. Kenny?
Now, now that the standards are met, then, um, we can do the public hearing, and I can notify the abutters.
Absolutely.
We got to open hearing on this?
Yeah. Um. No. I think so. Kenny, how does the 16th look to you?
Um, I think there'll be, that should give him enough time to get it in the papers.
Yeah.
He's looking for one waiver too, the waiver of a survey.
Oh.
So if the boards can vote on that, if you guys are okay with that.
And the reason being?
Um, just off of the tax maps and the Google, he's nowhere near any of his property lines.
Okay. And, oh, and if we were sitting in the office, we could see that on the map, correct? Thank you. Very good, good, okay. Yeah, yeah. So, uh, if we could entertain a motion to waive the survey?
I'll make a motion to waive the survey.
I second that motion.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Gavin?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Okay, you have your waiver. So I think we'll set, um, just checking with Brenda, the 16th is okay? Ken?
Yeah, that'll give us a public hearing for almost every Thursday this month.
Right, right. We'll get this stuff behind us. What? Val, does the 16th work for you?
Yeah, now, is that just the same thing, same Zoom meeting kind of thing?
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, perfect. What time is that?
6:30.
6:30, the 16th.
The 16th.
Yeah, I can remember that.
Okay, and we should be able to get your, we should be able to get that all done that night.
Great.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Enjoy the rest of your evening.
You too.
Okay. Pending projects. Uh, there, Grammy Rose, LLC Route 109, Map 233, Lot 004. Site plan review application for a dog rescue and sanctuary, mini golf and ice cream shop. Public hearing is scheduled for July 9th. Good reply to, I would like to report to the board that I have heard from, um, I'm never going to get his name properly, but from one of the, uh, fellows there, uh, Jim, I'm pulling his name up now, Jim, Demeraki, I think, I excuse myself. And he asked me what he might expect, and I told him that he should expect to give his, uh, little talk about what they were doing, and to expect questions from abutters and the public. That's what it was. And yes, he would be able to, he said, can I answer those questions? I said, yes, that's the whole idea of it. You can answer the questions. And he said, have you any idea what kind of questions? And I said, well, I'm quite sure you're going to be asked about noise. And, uh, so that was the correspondence through the, uh, planning board email. That was the correspondence I received from him and did answer him back. I will, uh, make sure you have a copy of that email if you want it, in your packets for next week, if you think it's necessary. Otherwise, there'll be one in the land office file. So, any questions about that?
I don't think it's necessary.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, uh, York County Agricultural, unless Ken has something, nothing new. And Ken, you have a CEO report, it says. Did you know?
Uh, I, I put my agenda away when the Zoom meeting crashed, so, no, I've got no updates, no best practical locations.
None, okay, reminder, uh, please go over your information that you have in your packets about Grammy Rose, uh, the site plan, uh, review, the application next week, as well as the, um, public, uh, public hearing. So please go over it. If you think you're missing something, call 1-800-KEN. He'll make sure you have everything you need. Anybody have anything else? I have a few of you here.
I have, I have one question.
Yes.
Uh, would you do me a favor, and would you notify Jennifer upstairs of my appointment so she can have the proper paperwork?
Yes, I will.
For the, uh?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Um, we, we want to do something, uh, and I'm, I really feel kind of bad doing this, but I'm looking at the people who are here, and I don't believe, um, but we want to do something for Yoli, so we're asking everybody to chip in, and, uh, since we can't take her to lunch or dinner at this point in time, uh, maybe we'll get her a gift certificate at someplace where she and her husband could go out to eat. So when you go into the office to get your packets next week, if you could, uh, leave a little something for that, it would be appreciated. We're going to have a certificate for her, and the selectmen are going to have a certificate of appreciation. And the selectmen are going to have a certificate of appreciation for her. Yoli was on the board for 18 years. So anyway, there you go. I'd like a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Second. Was that you, Leslie?
Yeah, it was me.
Okay. All in favor? Gavin?
Yep.
Dennis?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yep.
I say yes. Good night, everyone. Have a safe, happy Fourth of July.
Thank you.
Thank you.